Hi, today I'm sitting here with Mark Andrew and I'm looking forward to talking to him about his experience with as a Hennepin County Commissioner and learning what he's up to right now. So please introduce yourself.
Okay, how voluminous do you want the introduction to be? I could probably go on because I'm getting old.
Well, maybe start with what you're doing right now. I think you have your own nonprofit or foundation you're working on?
Yep, actually it's taken 50 years, but for the first time ever, starting last month, I'm not on any nonprofit boards or professional undertakings aimed at public service. So it's been a long drought between breaks and I've been trying to enjoy it a little bit, but the current events keep pulling me back into engagement with what's happening in the world. And so I'm pretty fired up to be involved in some kind of public service again, not elected, but to get involved in some organizations. By way of introduction, I'm a Minneapolis guy. I was born at St. Mary's Hospital and grew up in the Powderhorn Park neighborhood and went to Minneapolis Washburn High School and the University of Minnesota. I've been an activist since getting out of high school. I was in the high school class of the famous 1968, which is the spring that Martin Luther King got blown away and Lyndon Johnson said, "I shall not seek nor will I accept my party's nomination as your president." And then Humphrey became the candidate and it was all about Minnesota in that Democratic Convention of 68. And I stayed very hardwired into the political and environmental fields. I was the first president of Emperg at the University of Minnesota. I was chair of Earth Week in my waning months at the university. And I got hired at the senate very young to be a policy guy at 24 years old for a guy named Roger Moe who lost the governor's race to Palente a few years back.
Well, and I so it was the that environmental work, I think that first kind of put you on my radar and I ended up volunteering and I know you don't remember, you had a lot of volunteers on your campaign, but you ran, what was the year you ran for city council? I'm sorry, for mayor? You ran for mayor?
2013.
2013, okay. And then it was before that that you were on the Hennepin County Commission?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but I'd been, I had quit the board a long time before that. I'd actually been out of public office, public life for 13 years probably. And I never had any inkling about running for office again. But when Ryback decided to leave, I had people calling me, much to my amazement, encouraging me to run for mayor. And I was the last one in the race. So some of my best friends had already supported, already endorsed other people. But I got in on a wing and a prayer and yeah, within a few weeks, we were the considered frontrunner in that campaign. So it turned out to be, even though I came in second place out of 35 candidates.
Thirty-five.
Yeah.
Well, there's only 15 running this time around.
It turned out it was the first ranked choice voting.
Oh, okay.
Which did me no favors whatsoever.
Well, I want to talk about that in more detail, but I mean, first, obviously, you know, we have to recognize what happened yesterday at Annunciation, which was absolutely horrible. I think everyone agrees on that. But I wanted to hear your knowledge about like what the city and the county has maybe tried in the past to deal with gun violence, in particular, maybe mental health issues. I know Hennepin County has a lot of programs. They're pretty good about experimenting, I guess, with different things?
I'd say so.
I don't know if, so yeah, I'd just love to hear what you know about it. I know you mentioned R.T. Ryback, that at one point there was a massive shooting while he was mayor. And they had a big conference on gun control that a lot of local politicians participated in. And I don't recall what the outcome of that was, but it's obviously, there's very little gun control in the state. So yeah.
Yeah, it's a great question. And given the circumstances in our community right now, obviously top of mind for a lot of people. It was a hugely sad and tragic event yesterday. And you know, I'm too numb, like everybody else is, to be infuriated yet. But certainly not much has happened on the gun control front. Trump has, you know, rescinded all the other actions that were taken on the first significant gun control legislation passed in many years, a few years ago in Congress, including, you know, bump stocks and a lot of things just got repealed.
Well, and just recently they had that, in this, in the state level here in Minnesota, I don't know if you saw, they had put like a shadow trigger law into this latest bill. But the Supreme Court has said, well, you can't do that because it needed to be its own specific law.
Yeah.
And so they overturned.
And I think that was the state Supreme Court.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But now I think we might see further parts of that legislation get challenged because of that.
It might.
I mean, it just goes to show how, I guess, difficult it is to put in any kind of controls on guns.
Yep. And hope springs eternal. But there is no environment to make significant changes until we get rid of the federal administration, the presidential, as well as the Supreme Court. They're, they're not going to move. So that's, doesn't mean, doesn't mean that good things can't happen. Good things can happen. When Biden was in the US senate, you know, they passed significant gun reform at that time. And that reduced, you know, the, that reduced the murder rate significantly until it changed. So you asked about the city and the county though, and I think that's a very relevant thing to talk about. So when you look at city government and county government, one of the really important distinctions that you need to make between those two levels of government is that the city government generally is responsible for what I always like to call physical services, you know, garbage pickup, police protection, fire protection, snow plowing, things like that, and zoning for buildings, permitting for construction projects. So a lot of bricks and mortar type functions. The county government by and large is responsible for human services. So I would argue that in my, I was elected five times to the county board and served 16 and a half years. And there was not a malady that the county board didn't try to address in people. Mental health, developmental disabilities, homelessness, violence, home violence.
Are there any programs that came out of that time that you recall that you thought were really effective at all?
There, it was the city who was championing gun legislation at that point because the county, the city did police, the county did sheriff. So the sheriff happens after the person is apprehended and put in holding at the jail. And then the county judges and the county sheriff and the county prosecutors and the county public defenders, if you're broke, get in the act and they, and they manage the client load, caseload at that point. So the county wasn't really involved in the gun activities, but the city kept getting shut down.
Well, I mean, that's, that's a really nice way of defining the difference, like that the, basically the police and the city would handle the arrest and then the sheriff's office handles everything after that.
Yep.
Hadn't thought about it in those terms.
Yep.
But in terms of not just gun violence, but other programs, whether it was mental health or hunger, is there any, anything in particular that stands out from your 16 years that you thought the county did really well?
We funded, I chaired social services at the county for half my time there and the other half I was chair of the board. But I used to tell people that any community-based treatment or therapeutic program that you can think of, the Bridge for Runaway Youth, the, you know, battered women's programs are funded in full or in part by Hennepin County. So we spent, we funded 680 different social programs when I was on the board. I don't know what it is today and I've been off the board. I should reemphasize, I've been off the board for a long time. So.
Well, it's not, it's not exactly a social program. It was in the Department of Corrections. But what brought my wife and I here was because she took a job at the Hennepin County Homeschool, which is now closed.
Yes.
But she was a social worker and it was really amazing in that, well, first of all, it's fantastic property, but.
Fantastic.
It was a lot, it was the first time that a lot of those youth had gotten mental health services and three good meals a day and had fresh air because it's basically a farm.
Yep.
And it was, it was a great program and I keep throwing it out there whenever I can that we should bring it back because I think they, that they've switched from, they don't want to put youth in jail and they feel like separating them from their families does more harm. And so they've switched to this model of more like trying to have in-home arrests, I think, or like corrections within the community.
Yep.
And I'm sure there's some benefits, but having been so close to the homeschool, it definitely served those youth pretty well.
Absolutely. And, you know, give your spouse a hug and a pat on the back for me because she was working with really what was considered to be among our toughest.
Yeah.
Population at the homeschool. And I too regret that it was shut down, but it was all inevitable. It was coming for 20 years because of deinstitutionalization.
Yeah.
And the court, some of it court ordered, some of it lack of funds necessitated. And but we lost some really good programming at that facility. The issue with people getting wayward and then lapsing into this madness where they become schizophrenic or they become, you know, whatever monster this kid turned into yesterday that caused him to do, to do this is absolutely a lack of identification of him as a high risk, part of a high risk population that isn't being funded today, that has to get funded. And as much as, and I don't want to get partisan, but as much as the far right talks about, you know, we need to do mental health services and, and for this population of people, they're the ones who cut funding.
Yeah.
The big beautiful bill that Trump advocated slashed all, virtually all of the federally based, community based funding for this population of people. So, you know, it's inexcusable. It's beyond hypocritical. And that piece, that element is missing. And as long as it's missing, we're going to have more people on the edge lapsing into madness and doing these crazy things.
Yeah, it's so frustrating because we've decided that, you know, we're not going to do gun control, but we're also not going to fund mental health services. So it's, it's just like this free for all and then, you know, things like yesterday happen. So I don't know if there's any solution in the near future at all. I really don't.
There are a couple of things when I was running for mayor that I had wanted to do. And I also want to say parenthetically, Terry, that our next door neighbors in South Minneapolis, a mile from Annunciation, their kids, their lovely five-year-old daughter who brings me Valentines and cookies and next door, from next door, she started on Monday. And she did not get hit, but her cousin is in critical condition and has shrapnel in her brain. And they were so, I was over there yesterday and last night and we're going over again tonight next door. And so it's just so incomprehensible, incomprehensible that it's.
You know, one irony of this whole thing is like, I had just written a newsletter about a mass shooting that occurred on Tuesday. And, and, you know, part of what I had said was like, maybe we need to be seeing the pictures of the wounds and the bleeding and the damage. Because for whatever reason, the papers filtered that out. And I get that maybe it's a little sensational, but we don't spend enough time, I think, contemplating the damage that's happened to the victims.
No.
Right? And it's, we move, already we've moved on to arguing about, you know, what this Robin, Robin Westman, why he did it, or all those different things, or she did it, their motivations. And I mean, it makes sense a little bit. You do focus in on like, where did this person go wrong? Where did the system fail them? But like, so often the victims get just totally forgotten.
Totally. So this, this notion that is an interesting one of exposing the granular fine details in a graphic way to certain audiences, I favor that. I kind of go back to a Clockwork Orange image of the antagonist in that movie having his eyes propped open so he could see some of these violent episodes that he was a part of. And I think that should be prescribed and required viewing for the right wing to have to look at the murder that they are directly responsible for.
Well, I think of it too in terms of like the coverage of Vietnam, right? I mean, they say that like people didn't really react until it was like, just overcome with seeing these pictures, dramatic pictures on the paper like every day. And it brings it home in, in a totally different way.
It does.
But I did want to ask you about your run for city council and.
County Commissioner.
I'm sorry, for mayor, for mayor.
Okay, for mayor.
And you said that was 2013?
13, yep.
Right. And, you know, obviously what's happened here in the city recently with Fate having the endorsement taken from him, I was at the city convention, I covered it. And just, I'm interested in getting your thoughts on more of the convention, the caucus convention process in general. And now knowing that Minneapolis DFL is going to be on probation, is it time to rethink like their whole role in the political world? Like should, should they be giving out endorsements since, I mean, it's kind of, it's supposed to be a nonpartisan race, right? And the way you described it earlier about the city function being the physical things, you would never know that from when you listen to the candidates' talk because they're, the problems that they're trying to solve seem so much bigger than just those nuts and bolts of the city. So I think I asked you actually four questions.
It's okay. It's okay. I'll try to briefly.
Yeah.
Condense them. Well, speaking as a former chair of the Minnesota DFL Party, so I was elected chair of the party in 95, 96, 97. So I was there for the Clinton reelection, we had a very good year in Minnesota that year. And we really, when we're talking about the conventions, we're talking about the Minneapolis convention, we're talking about two issues. Number one, was it corrupt? Number two, is there, is it obsolete, the endorsement process? Is it obsolete? And, you know, I was a person who for many years opposed Minnesota going to a primary system as opposed to a grassroots endorsement system. Because in a primary, in a grassroots endorsement system, the weakness of that is not having enough people participating. So when I was chair, we had 60,000 roughly statewide, or statewide participating in precinct caucuses, very small numbers. It was bigger when Obama was running, much bigger, but then dropped again. It's very small. But with a primary system, what I didn't like is that it was, allowed the rich and the well financed to buy their primary victories. Whereas great candidates who were unable to raise money and buy sufficient TV ad time, didn't have a benefit of endorsement. So those things kind of had to be balanced. I don't think the endorsement process means all that much anymore. Like when I ran for mayor in 2013, I lost to Betsy Hodges. You know, they called the pizza party at one in the morning because we were like seven votes from getting endorsed. I can't remember how many, but it was very, very few votes. And they were trying to get people to leave. So we didn't have a quorum and it worked. So they ordered pizzas at one o'clock in the morning for everybody. And people went outside during the balloting and we didn't get a quorum and therefore there was no endorsement and therefore I didn't get endorsed. But I actually don't think that that had a enormous impact on winning the election or losing the election. That was the first year of ranked choice voting. And so in that case, ranked choice, you know, probably hurt me. But, you know, who knows? But the other piece of the Minneapolis convention, aside from should we even do these endorsements anymore, is the question of corruption. And that is a very serious question, Terry. And I know you're deeply interested in it because you've talked about it.
Yeah.
Before. And in my view, as a former party chair, this was the first example that I recall as a chair or former chair, where there were so many irregularities and it was so, in my view, intentionally corrupted that the DFL Party made the right decision. I faced the same decision on a contested endorsement in a rural county when I was chair of the DFL Party. And I ruled that it was not going to get, that the challenges were not going to be, were not sufficient to overturn the endorsement. Most DFL conventions are disorganized.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a state, it's a, it's a condition of the Democratic Party. That's actually a function of something good. Many voices, many points of view, big tent, you know, that's a good thing. But when you get that many vantage points in the same room and you're embracing all of them under a tent, it's going to get complicated.
So a couple of things within what you said that I thought of. One, I just wanted to mention that we did interview Gene Massey from Fair View, Fair Vote about ranked choice voting. And, you know, I guess my big issue with that in general is that it's still not that well understood by a lot of people. Like they, and then it also leads to all this strategizing in the campaigns about like trying to get someone's second place votes. And I think in theory, it's, candidates are supposed to play nice because they want the other votes. But the way we're seeing it in our elections, that's not, I don't feel like really playing out.
Yeah.
But that, that's kind of a side point, but.
But it's an important one.
Yeah, yeah. And it, the second choice votes will probably determine this, the next mayor, I'm thinking. But the, the one thing that you said that I, the difference between the primary and the caucus and stuff is that I still feel like in one of the, and I know I'm not alone, is that small groups of people can really influence those caucuses and those conventions. And it's not really that big a tent because the people who are, one, have the time and the wherewithal to go to a caucus and then go to a ward convention and then go to a city convention, you are like excluding, I think, anyone who's basically a parent or, you know, just doesn't have that much free time. I mean, it's, I think that's one of the criticisms, and I wonder if it's obsolete, is, is it too exclusionary? In that, in primary, at least on the surface, I get what you're saying about like being able to dominate the airwaves when you have the money. But anybody can show up and vote. And so in that way, it seems a lot more open. You would get a lot more voices to weigh in. Does that, is anything I'm saying true to you there?
Yeah, I'd have a hard time disagreeing with it.
Yeah.
You know, but, but let's acknowledge though, Terry, that both systems are imperfect. And especially with the Supreme Court outrageously declaring that corporations are people and, and everything that came out of Citizens United, that has made things extremely difficult for oftentimes highly qualified people to compete in primary elections. Because the money is endless for people who have connections. But sometimes really great candidates, grassroots type candidates who could flourish in public office, public service, don't have the opportunity. But I still think what you're saying, things have shifted a little bit more, in my mind, toward that process as opposed to the caucus system, which is, you know, again, very flawed.
So flawed or corrupt, right? I mean, like you mentioned.
In this case, corrupt.
Yeah. So there's essentially a movement has happened to take over specifically the Minneapolis DFL. I don't know if it's gone into the state party at this point. I don't know the ins and outs of the DFL, but it certainly would seem from the actions that were taken that people have determined that the Minneapolis DFL is not qualified at this point to run these conventions.
No.
Right?
And the conveners and the people who chaired it, that's only part of the problem. They were insanely partisan. And, you know, we are conveners and convention chairs historically have, you know, they've passed a litmus test of being able to be objective. And, you know, everybody's got a point of view. And, and so everybody's going to be for somebody. And it's not always going to be, you know, the, the person they want that's in front of them who appears to be the stronger candidate. But this convention was an outrage on every level.
All right.
Yeah.
So then, so what's the, what's the future then for the Minneapolis DFL, do you think? I mean, I know they're on probation, which means they have to run everything by the, the state DFL committee and they need to basically have an improvement plan in place. Do they ever endorse again? Or should they?
That's a fantastic question. I would answer yes to both questions. I think they will endorse again. I think the party is going to ratchet down on the convention standards statewide. So I think it's an opportunity to make DFL conventions, which are always haphazard and always have, you know, obvious imperfections. I think they're going to work to make that better. And when they do, I think the endorsement is still going to carry some legitimacy, but it's the convention, the convention endorsement does not mean what it used to mean. In my first campaign, I defeated a female incumbent who was trying to run for attorney general because on the first ballot. And I was a relative unknown. And that endorsement was extremely important to me. It's not that important anymore.
Well, it certainly seems harder to know what it means because there's such a wide range of diversity and outlook from candidates that have the DFL endorsement. So that when, just if you're, if you're out there and you're not researching a candidate and you're just voting because of the endorsement, I would, you sort of need to be cautious. I would, you sort of need to be cautious because you don't really know what you're getting.
Yeah.
I think. I don't know if people who, who aren't watching the play by play understand some of the changes that have happened in the DFL.
True.
So.
And then another wrinkle in what you're saying is that, you know, the ones who appear to be fantastic candidates and we have to endorse this person because he or she is a fantastic candidate. They get endorsed and they end up not being such great public servants. And I've seen a lot of people who are come and go, who were good show horses, but who are not good workhorses.
Right.
Or racehorses. So that happens too and the endorsement process is not infallible.
Well, that, so it's funny you mention that because I was actually thinking about that this morning and that and I mean, it's really two different skills. Running for office and then actually performing in office. And I always think of it in terms of like, if you write a book, a novel, that is a skill. But you also have to then turn around and be able to sell the novel, right? And, and like, there's probably a lot of novels sitting out there that are excellent, that are going nowhere because you don't, it's a different skill set to actually sell the novel. You gotta, you know, put on this promotional hat that not everyone is comfortable
Yep.
wearing.
The greatest person I ever saw who mastered both the political side of it as well as the policy side of it, sort of triangle, triangled masterful public policy and then understanding that with masterful politics was Bill Clinton.
Yeah.
Clinton was amazing that way because he had such a keen intellect and a clear understanding of public policy in depth. But he also had the ability to articulate the political side of that.
Yeah, he could be baba when he needed to be baba.
He was a really good baba.
I mean, I, I think with him too, it's like I was, like he used to remember everyone's name, right? Which is
Yeah, like Hubert Humphrey did.
Yeah. I mean, that's an, I'm terrible at that, but that is amazing skill.
Yeah.
So, so what happens, you think now for the Minneapolis DFL? How do they get back on track? Where, where do you see this thing ending up? And, and it seems important for twenty, I, I mean, obviously it was important this year. But midterms next year, like what happens next year with them? Anything?
Big, big question. You know, this is probably going to invite some harsh criticism by saying this, but I think the major players in this convention ought to be purged from any involvement in future conventions, number one. Number two, while I personally agree with many and probably most of the, the democratic socialist agenda in Minneapolis, that faction of the party does not, has not demonstrated any ability to build a coalition or understandings with other factions of the party.
Yeah.
And as long as they are at the table, it is going to be, there will be attempts to skew the outcomes because they do not know how to, nor do they desire to do anything but impose their rigid positions on everybody else. And I say this, I want it because I'm going to get in trouble. So I want to, I want to make sure I soften this to the extent where I, I affirm that many, many things in that platform I deal with. I was a Bernie Sanders guy. And until he lost the Carolina primary and, and Hillary became the odds on favorite, at which point I supported Hillary. But having said that, it's not about the positions on the issues. It's about how factions of the party are willing to come together as a party. So I'm not the, I got locked out. I was helping a unsuccessful non-DSA candidate run for a city council seat earlier this year. And the incumbent city council member in the seventh ward, I don't mind saying her name, and identifying who it is, locked us out when we were standing outside the door of a locked door and got called in to speak at the convention. The actual city council member, not her staff people, the actual city council member came to the door, looked out the window at my candidate and me and scoffed at us and turned around and walked away. And then called herself a coalition builder.
Yeah.
And so to me, that is typical of that brand of candidate. Not only is it fundamentally rude, but it is super counterproductive.
Well, they, it seems like
They're, we're not the enemies of each other is what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, but I, I mean, the, the, there's, it feels like they've done them what they consider the math. And they've decided that there's just huge parts of the Democratic Party they don't need to win. And so they, they can get their fifty-three percent and that's all they're going to listen to.
Right.
And that's very frustrating for, you know, the people that are locked out.
Yeah.
And I think that a good example of that too is how in twenty twenty-three, a lot of those candidates refused to be interviewed by the Star Tribune.
Yeah.
They're like, these are not our voters. We're not even going to pretend to reach out to them. That to me was quite shocking.
Shocking.
And so they've got their own publications, their own sort of communications network and, yeah. So I guess the future for the state party then is, is it safe to say that we need to find candidates that are more willing to build a coalition so that Democrats can stay in charge of not only the state, but then hopefully get back the, on the president, right? I mean, that's my, that's a big concern.
Yep.
Bringing, bringing it back into Minneapolis though, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions. One about the county responsibility for homelessness versus the city. And this specific instance that I'm thinking about is the, this parking lot by the developer or building owner Sabri. He's got a vacant building at Twenty-Eighth and Lake. He's opened up the parking lot to be an encampment and he's in this battle with, kind of exclusively with Jacob Frye. And so, you know, he's using it as a wedge to try and point out that all of the, the downsides of what Jacob Frye has done for. But I was, I was at the press conference and I specifically asked him about what role the county plays. And they're like, oh, the county's doing great. So I'm very curious, from your perspective, in this situation in particular, like what role would the county play versus the city? And the one thing that was described to me is like, oh, well, the county hires the nonprofits that then provide like the social workers and the services.
As well as county social workers. A lot of county staff actually do the same thing. So, and they supplement that by bringing in the nonprofits.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's a, this is a great thing to talk about from a selfish vantage point because I was deeply involved in this issue when I first got elected. And so you're probably going to have to cut me off because I'm going to go on and on about this. I ran on a, one of the planks of my platform was guaranteed housing for homelessness, even though the county doesn't do bricks and mortar housing.
Well, I mean, they don't, meaning like they don't build the buildings. But like they are paying millions and millions of dollars to house families and hotels and stuff.
Absolutely. And, or in armories or in other places. So I came on board and I got elected and after a vicious, months-long debate about what to do with the homeless, my position that passed. So this was kind, what I'm about to tell you was the policy of Hennepin County. Is that there's no ambiguity here. Hennepin County has the obligation to provide housing for every person who desires housing. Some homeless don't want it, but to, to, to provide guaranteed housing. Which means if we don't have enough beds, we go get the beds. And it finally, yeah, go ahead.
Well, the one of that, sounds terrific, but one of the controversies around that too is like you said, if people don't want it. Right? And that's a big disagreement among a lot of parties. Like people might want to bring their dog or they, you know, they don't necessarily want to stop drinking or all kinds of other things where they might want housing, but they don't want the housing that you're offering kind of thing.
Yeah. Which, which in my program that again passed, it didn't have conditions.
Okay.
It just said
That's housing first. That's what they call housing first now.
And, yeah, okay. Eligibility was presumptive. In other words, declarative. If you declared that you're homeless and you don't have a place to stay and you need a place to sleep, our resolution that passed said we're going to find that bed. Might have to go rent out a motel or hotel room, but you're going to get that bed. But we also funded a continuum of care for homeless people, which most of the, back in those days, those were people coming out of state hospitals. The homeless population has drastically changed. So initially, the homeless that got supported were straight white guys who were chronically unemployed and couldn't pay their rent. And that was the first iteration. Then a landmark lawsuit resulted in the emptying out of the state hospitals to de-institutionalize these individuals. And they came into the community and guess what? There weren't any services. The county ramps up. The city got involved only to the extent that I and a former Minneapolis city council member formed what we called the Homeless Task Force. It was a city council
Which I think still exists.
It's now called, yes, it's, it still exists. It was, in Hennepin County, it's called heading home something.
Okay.
But yes, that, that, I'm very proud to say that still exists thirty years later because it was an acknowledgement that it's a shared responsibility. But the end of the day, the county ought to be doing that, doing the funding. Now they're spending probably ten, fifteen times more money than they were spending before, and that's a big threat to the budget.
Well, it's a, they just wrote an article about this, a hundred and ninety million a year.
Okay.
From the county alone.
So that's five, six, seven times more than what we paid. But Terry, I will, I've said it before, I'll say it again. They are the funder of last resort for these beds and they above even more than the city. The county ought to be funding this. It's like what's been debated at Hennepin County Medical Center. Hennepin County is a last resort hospital for the indigent. And it isn't bad management so much that's driving the HCMC down. It's, it's, although that's a big factor with Trump now. Because the money is going away, so much money is going away. But it's because of, it's because of the bad debt and it's because of the uncompensated care. Those two categories of care aren't getting, that hole's not getting plugged.
Yeah.
And that hole's gotten really big.
Well, so I want to, I want to come, come back to that, but I wanted to, so talking about the homeless issue, we have the task force where the county and city people are supposed to be talking together. And I think coming up with some solutions, talking about who's doing what. I don't know exactly how well that works going. And then the county, as you said, had, do they still have this program? It seems like they do because I know last couple of years, they've spent a lot of money particularly on families that have moved into the area to house them. And that appears to be going down. But they're, they're, they're not necessarily going to build a new, I don't know, homeless shelter, the county directly, although I, I'm going to make a pitch that I would love to see them convert the Hennepin County homeschool into some type of facility for the homeless that, you know, could help them get back on their feet. I mean, it's, it, it just seems like a perfect place for it.
No argument there.
But with, in particular, like with this incident with Sabri and, you know, turning a vacant private property over to become an encampment. And then they start accusing the city of, you know, not providing trash pickup and toilets and stuff. And I think the city's position is like, well, you decided to make that parking lot an encampment.
Yeah.
So anyway, they're just going back and forth. But the county's like not involved, it doesn't seem. But should they be or?
Yes.
Like, how does something like that get resolved? Because I think Sabri also did this in the North Loop two years ago, where he had a property and he turned it into an encampment.
Sabri is a, it would be very difficult to be comfortable with his standards. Other, any harsher word leaves me liable to lawsuits, so I'm not going to say it.
I'll just say, I'll say this, that he's missing some optics because I was trying to take pictures of the encampments and they were blocked by his black Porsche SUV.
Yeah, he's a
And
Don't even get me going on
It, it feels like in this situation that, you know, I was, and maybe you knew this, his brother tried to ban the mayor from going to Carmel Mall. That there's some subtext here that is not out in the open, that this isn't just a simple. He's genuinely concerned about the homeless and wants to help them. I think there's other issues.
He's genuinely concerned about money and power in his little world. And is a deplorable anti Semite.
Yeah.
And anti feminist. And again, I don't want to say anymore about anybody's character, but he's not the guy you want to be paying attention to.
So how, so I, I, I want to, you know, before we, we go too far down that road, let's just say it's a different person and they just decided that they want to have, they have a vacant lot next to them and they want to let people, an encampment start there. Where, where does the county come in? I mean, can you, is it all the city that should take the, the, the heat there or what, what should the county do in that situation?
In the case of the encampments, I think the primary responsibility of clearing them out is a city responsibility. And I think the responsibility of preventing them from going in ought to be a city responsibility. Again, that's more of a police function than it is just a human resources situation. But let's look at this issue of encampments as a moral issue. That's how I look at it. It is immoral to be satisfied as the DSA wants to do with allowing campgrounds that have no sanitary facilities, no organized food programs, drug and alcohol infested, high rates of violence. It is immoral to be satisfied with that. And so the policy that I passed as a county commissioner not only guaranteed a bed before they took the beds away and put placemats on the ground after I left, but guaranteed access to meals programs. And where possible, provided, didn't always provided twenty-four hour shelter.
So have we gone backwards? Has the county gone backwards?
Yes.
And why?
Unequivocally backwards.
Why? I mean, is it because, I mean, because when COVID happened and that all these federal dollars rushed into the state, it seems like they, those programs at least for the last few years should have been funded. I mean, they're spending a hundred mil, a hundred and ninety million dollars a year. So where's, where's it all? So where's, where's it all going? Why are we going backwards if that funding's there?
I am stymied, other than the the demand is otherwise so great. And we know it's higher than it was, but, you know, we were not spending anywhere near a hundred million dollars, nowhere near that. And but again, I think the focus the county had at that time was finding beds and subsidizing the beds and that was, and then the social programs that already existed. And now the county may be including social programs as part of that cost. I don't know, but um there is no question that they ought to be playing a bigger role.
And it seems to me, and this is where I I guess I would be interested in learning more about that interagency task force because um as I was mentioning to you before the the interview, one of the reasons I decided to run for city council in twenty twenty-three was because of what was happening in Uptown. And I, you know, I I guess I didn't know how many jurisdictions were involved with the homeless encampments. I just knew that they were a lot of them and I felt like, I mean, your immediate reaction is the city should do something, right? But the one that that um kept recurring over and over again was that the underpass um at Thirty First Street and the highway, well, that's MDOT. You know, which is interesting. So it's, it now they're involved, right? Because if you go through there now, they tried five different ways of blocking off that sidewalk with concrete blocks, this and that, and now they have these giant fences up
Yeah.
because people keep coming back, but um one, it just seems a bit like an obstacle to me that there's so many players, so many different levels of bureaucracy involved in trying to come at a solution. I mean, there's the county, the city, there's MDOT, there's all these different uh nonprofit agencies. Is there, I don't know, uh, something to bring these people together to um so that we can can make more progress that that you've heard about or um, do you have any suggestions?
One of them is money, so that's kind of the obvious first one. These things are gonna require more money, but I also think that a more tailored approach to services for truly chronically homeless people ought to get um developed. And so usually there are so many dysfunctions among the homeless population. There's a great deal of mental illness, a great deal of addiction, a great deal of people who are just don't fit. You know, people with a little tic or, you know, pretty much unemployable people, borderline developmentally disabled. I mean, it's a very big mess um mix. Women who have been repeatedly beaten by their partners uh and who have no um self feeling of self-worth uh to actually do anything to provide housing, can't take care of the kids. Uh, I mean, all of these maladies are found in that population. And I think that even though programs do exist, I think that the creative thinkers in Hennepin County and the nonprofits ought to figure out a mo- try to develop a model which incorporates both a housing piece, which is gonna be more bricks and mortar. So I do support your notion that there ought to be constructed more facilities for the homeless. It's a never-ending problem, so obviously it's not gonna, you know, you can't
Well, and you know, I mean, I'm familiar with the Hennepin County Homeschool, but there's also a lot of just school buildings that are empty right now. And we have lots of, so I mean, you just wonder, is there a way to even temporarily turn these into housing until we get it under control, especially with the winter coming on? And then, you know, almost as like um a flex transition center, find, you know, get them the individual uh attention that they might need until they can get on their feet and then shrink back down. Hopefully it gets smaller and but we'll see with Medicaid cuts and everything else. Uh, I mean, I worry that this, it's going to get worse before it gets better.
It is.
I mean, there are certainly, any of that federal help that we had for the last four years is going away, so.
It's gonna get worse and it's probably gonna get a lot worse. You can't slash a trillion dollars and not expect it to have dramatic consequences.
Yeah. Well, and another fallout from that is um uh HCMC. And you mentioned that is there, has this always been a problem with the HCMC? So for people who aren't familiar with it, it's kind of the hospital of last resort, if you will. I mean, they have to accept everyone regardless of their ability to pay. And um that's resulted in some massive debts.
Yes.
Tens of millions of dollars each year. And it sounds like this, in the last week or two, Hennepin County commissioners decided they were gonna take over the hospital, that the nonprofit board they had appointed, the, this is um a very basic overview of it, but it seems like they felt like they weren't getting enough transparency into the funds that the nonprofit board uh was given to run the hospital. And so they are taking back control so that they know how the money is being spent. I don't know if the nonprofit board has been disbanded, but am I explaining it right? What do you know about it?
Yeah.
So.
And what do I know about it nowadays, what I read in the newspaper, that's really
Yeah.
You know, I haven't had any involvement directly with the hospital for quite a long time, except as a patient. It's one of the places that my family has used as one of the primary medical facilities because Hennepin is a very good hospital. The the issue, I touched on that for just a second earlier, but you know, the management piece is very important. When I was on the county board, we ran everything. So we were the board of governors of the Hennepin County Medical Center and we got terrific reviews from the certification, hospital certification um organizations that were required to evaluate the work that was done. And I wouldn't be a bit surprised if this management model has also gotten pretty good reviews. They haven't got
The nonprofit
Yeah.
Board model.
Yeah, you know, it hasn't been bad enough, so the certifying agencies have not come forward and said, this is being run terribly. The biggest problem in a public hospital is uh getting the funds from the government to help plug the holes to serve the people that you're morally and or legally obligated to serve.
Yeah.
And um it's like housing. I think housing is a right. Government has responsibility to provide housing for the homeless. Government has a responsibility to provide medical care for the indigent. And um that hole has gotten so big that I don't know if any amount of creativity in programming or strategy is gonna fully address that.
Do you, do you know, does HCMC get money from both state and the county? It's not just county-funded, is it?
Oh, God, no.
Yeah, no.
You know, there's a lot of Medicaid funding
Right.
Um, that ends up there and there's some, again, um, has been at the Hennepin County and out of touch. But there was significant Medicare involved. Also, as a teaching facility, it got federal government reimbursements. So Hennepin County has trained many, if not most, of the doctors in this market.
So trying to parse that answer, I um, I guess I'm I'm just not sure. Should I think that the Hennepin County Commissioners can and will do a good job of managing the facility? Or should I question that? Uh, did the county, did the nonprofit board, were they not being transparent enough? Like, I haven't been able to really figure out what's going on there.
Yeah, um, the transparency issue is a great thing to ask about and it's super important. I think the county commission, the Hennepin County Board, is gonna do a better job with that.
Okay.
So they're kind of forced into being um transparent because the, every dollar in that facility is gonna have a starting point and an ending point. And there's an accountability thing that the county itself does. The other complaint about turning it back to the county is that there were people of color and maybe more diverse backgrounds on the nonprofit board. But I will tell you with, as a guy with experience, county commissioners are highly sensitive to diversity.
Yeah.
Highly sensitive to diversity and um, you know, we we don't have a majority people of color county board, but we have um representation from diverse communities at the county board who are ultra-sensitive to what's going out there. And in the, in one way, I would argue that the county board is better at dealing with diversity than simply having members who are, have diverse personal backgrounds. Because the county commissioners know the, a lot of the programs, a lot of the people who run various programs. And um they will not miss a beat on undergirding the diversity and probably would improve it. So I think, and I think they'll be completely transparent.
Well, I guess we'll see where where it goes. I mean, I've heard that it's pretty tough on the staff at the hospital, that, you know, they stay busy, right? And I don't know if they were, the nurses and stuff were thinking of striking there, but I've, seems like every hospital right now is going through a lot of stress just trying to um keep the doors open.
And now look at the great big beautiful bill.
Yeah.
What's gonna happen there to Medicaid is like mind-boggling. And so, you know, you're not talking about a million-dollar cut. You're talking about millions
Yeah.
in virtually every hospital. The rural hospitals are gonna get crushed.
And they've, haven't they um timed it? Doesn't a lot of that not kick in until after the midterms next year? Right?
Let's talk about, let's talk about cynicism for a minute and gross dishonesty. Yeah, these uh things, these nefarious uh actions in the way they uh execute them are shielded from the public until after the twenty-six elections.
Well, you know, I hear a lot of people joking, I mean, I don't know if it's joking's the right word, but they are worried or skeptical that especially like with this shooting tomorrow, that like um, you know, Minneapolis might become the next Trump invasion city. And I hope that doesn't happen, but it definitely seems like um we're on the the federal radar of enemies list.
Yeah, we would naturally be, although I think Jacob has been um wisely restrained in his personal criticism. Incidentally, I think uh the mayor has done a great job on this tragedy
Okay.
dealing with it. And I think the city police force has done a great job. I think they were on the scene within minutes
Yeah.
yesterday. I think Jacob uh very sincerely articulated the devastation he personally felt as well as for the community. He said the right words to the global audiences. I think he distinguished our community very well in dealing with a completely tragic and sad situation. So, you know, he did a good job with that. You don't have to like him, but
Yeah.
There's
No, he's, he rose to the occasion and he's um had to deal with an enormous number of really significant events in the city. You know, whether it was George Floyd or now this.
I mean, and COVID.
Yeah.
It just, it's just been unbelievable.
He's been tested, so we'll see uh if people um, you know, support him this time around because of that.
He uh, I know we're gonna wrap here, but just one thing about the the mayor's race politically.
Sure.
Um, and um I'm a, you know, personal friend of the mayor's. I lo- I I love Jacob and his family. Um, they're great human beings. He's very progressive. I laugh when people say it's the moderates against the socialists and none of us are moderate.
Yeah.
We're progressive Democrats and socialists. And uh Jacob is uh is uh falls into that bag. He is, he's a very progressive, very thoughtful, um, very bright policy guy.
I mean, those those labels um mean one thing inside Minneapolis, but as soon as you go outside of Minneapolis, the the distortion is amazing, right? Like, what what uh, you know, in many other states or even outside of Minneapolis, like Jacob would be considered practically a communist.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And so I, I, when you travel out, like, my son is going to school in Montana. And I mean, it's like when you travel around other parts of this country, it, you know, what they call Republican doesn't fit, you know? Like, there's a, there really are hardcore Republicans and MAGA people out there. And it it seems like let's really figure out how to defeat them instead of tearing apart the, you know, the the Democrats with these labels that just apply in like the metro area. I don't know.
That's super smart, what you said. And it's super important that the Democrats figure that out.
Well, we'll see.
We'll see.
Thank you for spending time with me today.
Thanks for inviting me. I loved being here today.
Great.
Good job, Terry White.